All right, it's six thirty, we're gonna call this meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brad Crandall. Ron Horton. Sarah Jones here. Brian Smith. Dana Wells Jenny. Here. Jeff Wilpersberger.
Here.
Tim Wood.
Here.
All right, is there any items that anyone would like to have added or removed from tonight's agenda? Moving on to number five, public comments. We've got three in the pile. Crystal Newman is first.
Well, Crystal Newman, two one four seven three Clearlake Avenue. I don't have a lot to say this time around. I just wanted to express some deep disappointment in the lack of board comments at the last meeting, and also commend Natalie for speaking up. Parents talk, and there's rumors as to why none of you spoke up. And I just want you to make sure you know that when you are speaking in your circles, those circles will also speak. I will not repeat the rumor as to why there was no board comments. Hopefully today, there might be some more comments. There was a lot at that last meeting, and just an acknowledgement that they came, you heard them, would have been sufficient. Nothing being said is a very strong stance. And if you are listening, or the rumor is true, I highly suggest you also speak up for yourself too, and that one person is not speaking for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Charlie Fulbright.
Good evening, Charlie Fulbright, three one two Capitol Avenue Northeast. I normally come prepared and type out a script, but what I wanna say to you all, but to be honest, I didn't even think I was going to come and speak, so I put this on my phone in the parking lot like ten minutes ago. So, what more can I say that hasn't already been said, not only by myself, but the twenty-nine other people last time? Then I thought, when I became an advocate, not just for LGBT issues, but for education issues as well, my role is never-ending. When you become a leader for education, you always have to pursue. You are all leaders for education. When you got elected or appointed, you had to take the oath of office to uphold the Michigan Constitution. The Constitution that says all children have the right to free public education, all students, free of discrimination. This includes policy changes when needed, this includes curriculum changes when needed, and this includes books that celebrate and educate all walks of life. To be clear, I'm also a Christian, which has no relevancy in teaching of different hair types, different orientations, or identities. You may not agree with me, but when you took that oath, you agreed to the equity of education for every student that comes through those doors. Thank you. Phil Panters.
Thank you. Deana Spencer.
Hello, Deana Spencer, thirty-four Radley Street, Battle Creek. We were here last month in reference to the proposed, to the proposal to ban certain books from the K through six curriculum, as you are all aware. And although the curriculum has been adopted, this issue of booking has not been officially addressed by anyone here. We have not been thanked for coming, which you've already heard about tonight. We have not been acknowledged, other than by our student representatives, so thank you for any of our comments that remain. This issue is important, and is worthy of acknowledgement. I am here to remind you of your duties and what you were elected to do, and who you were elected to serve as a non-partisan representative. This means personal feelings aside. You may say this is not our fight. As a non-Penfield resident, and to you, I would say that it is all of our fight. When you teach kids about love, and support, and kindness, and diversity, you teach kids to be well-informed, educated, and compassionate adults who will run the future of school boards of all of our futures. Thank you.
I didn't know that I had to fill something out to speak, I guess.
Yep, there's a paper over there.
Well, I have one, I guess I don't.
Oh, do you need a pen?
I guess I don't know, I'm just asking. I've been to many school boards, many of these school meetings, many, many different things, and forcing to fill out information like this.
It's our policy.
Policy, but it violates some law.
Okay, well, it's our policy, and it's on our website. And if you don't like it, then you can make arrangements forty-eight hours ahead of time and speak with our school superintendent, and that's also listed on our website. It's posted on our website.
So, I'd like to just get three minutes, or whatever it is that.
Then you can fill out the form.
You know my name, Deana.
I know your name, but.
But I'll give my name, even matters.
We're asking you to fill out, this is our, this is our process.
Yep, this is our process, and it's just.
I understand, that's why I'd like to address maybe your process.
If you fill out the form, I would be happy to let you.
I'll fill out.
I'm gonna ask you to leave. If you don't wanna fill out the form, you're gonna be asked.
Afterwards, I'd like to give my three minutes here.
No, fill out the form first. That's what everybody else here is doing. We're asking you to stop.
Mr. Salisbury.
Is Stephanie the chair? I'm sorry.
Mr. Salisbury.
She's not the chair.
Salisbury, Mr. Salisbury, Deputy Salisbury.
Hold on, Mr. Salisbury, I have an opportunity. I said I would fill this out.
You can fill it out now, we'll wait while you fill it out.
I simply asked to do my three minutes, and then I would fill it out. I said, everyone heard, I would fill this out. And I'd just like to do my three minutes first.
Prior to the start of the meeting.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry, I've attended your meetings before, and I just showed up here. Okay. I just let you walk, hold in circles, you watch me walk in. You're not gonna remove me from this meeting, I'm just. You know better than that. And I'm sorry, you're not.
This is, one thing you need to understand, this is our meeting.
This is, this is a public, this is, this is a community's meeting.
No, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education, and the purpose of the Board of Education is for conducting school boards' business, and it is.
And it's bound by the Open Meetings Act, correct.
It is a privilege of the community to attend our meeting, but it's.
Privilege to the, privilege to the community.
Deputy Salisbury, don't do that.
I'm sorry.
They're asking you to leave.
But that's, they can ask all that they like, but I have not violated anything. I've simply been asked to do my time. They have been escalating it. I'm asking for my time. I said I would fill this out, because I had no clue until they did this. We'll talk about it right now. It's fine, because I've not violated any law. Their policy is trying to violate my ability to have a voice in the meeting. I've done this across the state of Michigan, Chuck. But this is not something that, I did not know that this is the way this was here. I had no clue, I just came to this meeting. I know, and that's where they asked me. So, this is why, they as a board, and the community needs to know, and see that this is a violation of people's rights and abilities to have a voice.
I would be happy to sit down and discuss this with you, sir, after the board meeting, or we can set up an appointment.
I'm not sure who, who are you?
I'm the superintendent of schools, and I'd be happy to discuss your concerns with you and address them at a later time outside of the meeting.
Okay, but you trying to speak over the chair of the meeting is, is just.
I'm not gonna engage with you, I'm not gonna engage with you.
You're trying to say.
I'd be happy to meet with you.
Ma'am, you're trying to say that I'm in a violation of your process procedure when you yourself, in your actions, violated process and procedure. You can't sit here and control things for your well-being and your control, like you said, for your meeting. But this is the public's meeting, everyone. This is the public's meeting, and what happened here right now is absolutely disgusting. And there's no meeting right now that's even going on, sir, so there's no meeting now. They've just, they've already.
You've disrupted the meeting, sir, and you've been asked to leave. And I'd be happy to follow up with you later.
Let's go, let's fill out the form and we'll continue that, right? We'll give my three minutes. I'm sorry, but I mean, in this situation, it would make sense to just be cordial.
It's fine.
And not have an escalated situation, because I didn't escalate it.
It's fine, just. No, this is how, if you want to talk otherwise.
I did not mean wrong, I'll fill it out right now and then we'll speak then. Let's do it, please give me a minute, can I have a second? Thank you. Fill this out for you. How does that go, he still has to go in order of sheets, or?
It's the last public comment, so he gets three minutes.
All right, I'd like to bring this meeting back to order.
Is there a timer or anything?
Yeah, I have the timer, I'm gonna get started right now.
Yeah, Anna Higala.
Oh, I'll get, you got the timer?
Yeah, sorry.
Three minutes or five?
Three.
All right, so, I apologize for that little disruption there, but in all reality, this meeting is for the public. This meeting is for public participation, and you all have a hard job. You have decisions that you have to make in the community. And so you have to make those decisions based on the best amount of information, all the information, all the creative ideas from the community. But right now, our whole system stifles that, like we just saw right here today. Because your system and your process, that you all showed right on film, that you violate your own process, so that you can have power and control over your meeting, is what you said. Your meeting is what you said. When this meeting is controlled by the Open Meetings Act for a reason. Because this is the people's meeting, where we, the people, have failed our duty to hold you accountable for the things going on in our communities. I mean, mind-boggling what just happened here, and the way that you wanna stand and defend. I, my, my, the only thing I thought I was gonna say when I got in here, you can tell my wife will vouch for this, is that, that, that I question why you only had one public comment time, and not two. Especially, why is it in the beginning and not at the very end, if anything? Because we should have an opportunity to comment on your, what you're doing here at this meeting. Because this is our meeting, the public's meeting. This is our ability, Article One, Section Three, the Michigan Constitution. You all took an oath to the Constitution, but I bet, I bet you can't, you've never read that, though. You have no idea what that means. Article One, Section Three, that we, the people, have the right peacefully to assemble, to consult for the common good, to instruct our representatives, that's you all. That's we, the people. Because Article One, Section One says that all political powers inherent in we, the people, and that's how it is. So, you're to be representatives, not political powers, authoritarians, over the people, in any way. Now, I disagree with these other people that came up here to yell at you on these things. Because a lot of the stuff that they're pushing is garbage. You notice my shirt says Marxism kills, diversity, inclusion, equity spells die. Because that's the truth. But you all have fallen into the trap of that system of power, and you don't even know it. You need to unlock the chains of this community. So that you can have greater participation, fill the auditorium every single meeting, with people that want to make things better, that have, that have different thoughts and ideas to make that happen. Because we stifle that, and we saw that right here today.
Thank you for your comments. Robin Nichols.
I'm Robin Nichols, and I am a Penfield resident. I actually came here just to kinda hear what was going on today, but I decided to make some comments, and my comments are on behalf of the students. I feel that our students are being short-changed. And what I mean is, and I guess I kinda say this to our community that hopefully is online and listening, we have a lot of negativity that's being said about our Penfield community on Facebook, Instagram, things that are not true. And it really affected me this past weekend. And I made a comment, I made a status on my Facebook page, because it's very concerning to me that we have people that are not involved in our community that are saying negative things about our community, and our community needs to come out and speak for themselves. You know, our children are the ones that are here, and we need to start speaking up for our children. So, if I have to be an advocate, you know, for all the children of Penfield, I have no problem doing that at all, I think everybody knows that. I'm at all their sporting events, I've been at the school, you know, chaperoning for dances, I've been on bathroom watch, whatever, because I have an interest in our students and in our community. That's why my granddaughter's here, because I believe in the Penfield community. So, when I hear people make negative comments, and saying things about our school that they do not know of, it really concerns me. So, I'm just telling Penfield, you know, for those that are listening, and even those that are in the room, you know, we have to start speaking up. We have to start speaking up, every school has their problems, as I said on my Facebook page. And I think it's time for everybody to worry about their own school districts. You know, we're trying to take care of our district, and we're gonna do that. You know, like I said, I'm gonna be an advocate for our kids. I love them, you know, and it's not just about my granddaughter, it's not just about my niece and nephew here, but it's about Penfield students as a whole, and about our district. I would've never came here if I didn't believe in Penfield. And my granddaughter, as I've told you many times before, has been here since second grade, even a school of choice, and now as a person. So, lastly, I wanna say that, there was, one of the things that was said, was said was, it was a lot of comments saying how racist Penfield was, because we've never had anyone African-American on homecoming court, this, that, and the other. We don't have anyone this year on homecoming court that's African-American, or any other color, when in fact, we haven't even done homecoming court yet, because our homecoming is not till October the seventh. Two years ago, our king and queen were both African-American. Last year, our queen was mixed. Nineteen ninety, some, I think it was nineteen ninety, there was another African-American queen. Nineteen eighty-nine, I think the year before that, there was another one. So, it's not about being, you know, African-American, whatever, or being represented, but I just want us to, as a Penfield community, to start speaking up and taking care of our own community. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have, moving on to number six, Presentations and Recognitions, six point oh one, Districts two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two Audit. Angie.
Good evening, I'd like to introduce Nate Walderman from Raymond. He's the one, his firm is the company that prepares our financial audit. You had an electronic copy, and then you also hit a hard copy available too. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Nate, and help go through the explanation of it, and then the questions.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, thank you for your time. As seen Gina said, name is Nate Walderman. I was the engagement principal on the audit again this year. Tonight, I just wanna do kind of a quick highlight of some of the changes of what you've seen in the reports from the prior year. Just some things to look out for in the report of what has changed over the prior year. And then feel free at any time to ask any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I do also wanna thank Angie for all the hard work in getting everything done. I will say, this is my very first audit presentation, and she was, it was the first audit that was issued this year. Out of our office, we do post a thirty engagements, and we're already through and presenting, and that's to be commended, that's a lot of hard work, and a lot of quick work to get it done this quickly. For the financial statements, the largest document that you have, I do wanna just point out a couple of different things that have changed from the prior year. First and foremost, on page one, is the Independent Auditor's Report. For us, in this document, that's the only piece that's truly our information. It's the, it's the audit report, the rest of the financial statements, and the contents therein, we helped prepare it just out of convenience, like probably ninety-five percent of the districts or more in the state do. But it's just because we do it multiple times, and it's out of, out of convenience. But that information that's in there is yours, management takes responsibility for that. But the report itself is just formatted a little bit differently, and that's the result of a change in audit standards. I'll point out a couple of other things tonight that changed because of the change in audit standards. And it really, the effect of it was just, it's not that we did anything differently, it's not that there was any substantive change in what we were doing. It's about reporting, and how we report those things to you. They changed the standards, changed the report format to something that they felt made a little bit more sense. In the ACBA, one of the first things that you'll notice is the opinion is at the front of the report. It used to be buried about middle, midway through in the three pages, and the standards editors felt, well, it kinda feels like that should be the first thing that we're telling people, is what the actual opinion is. So, the opinion on the financial statements is unmodified, it's considered to be a clean opinion. Kind of the gist of it is, you can rely on the information there. It's not perfect, we're not saying it's perfect, but it's something that can be relied upon, in our opinion, based on our audits. And then there's other information, as we've talked about in previous years, related to whose responsibilities for different information, what our responsibilities are, and what's included in an audit. The other changes for this year in presentation, really, there was one new standard that was implemented from the accounting perspective, and that was on leases. If you go to page thirty-eight of the report, this is the new lease footnote. For the district, it really wasn't anything that was super significant. You've had some equipment leases that were, that were required to be disclosed, but there was a restatement of how the amounts were presented, that type of thing, because of the new standard. It used to be, this lease would've been reported as an operating lease in the past, what was called an operating lease, the new standards kinda put all leases on the books. So, that was really the only significant thing in the report. I know Angie shares information with you on the details about the actual financial results, those types of things, but I'd be happy to go over anything if anybody had any questions on the financial results with you.
A quick one.
Yep.
So, if I'm looking at this, and I just wanna see what the general fund balance was year over year.
So, if you go to page, so there's a couple of different places if you're looking for the general fund results. So, if you go to page sixteen, this is your balance sheet. And you'll see, this presents the general fund, all your other major funds, and then the combining other governmental funds, everything else is combined into one. So, the general fund ended with a fund balance of six point four million. And you'll see that in the, in MDNA, it discusses kinda the percentages of your total expenditures. They kinda look at that, I think, for your unassigned fund balance, it was at about nineteen percent. Your total was at about twenty-seven percent. And then for the income statement for that, and there's not really a place where the general fund has side-by-side comparison. But if you look at page twenty and twenty-one, this is your budget-to-actual statement for the general fund. And you'll see there, you have what the original budget was, so what you would've adopted prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, the final amended budget, which would include all budget amendments up through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, and then your actual column for the results for the year. So, you'll see the net change in fund balance towards the bottom of page twenty-one was a decrease in fund balance of four hundred eighty-one thousand, that brought the fund balance that you had last year of six point nine million down to six point four, six point five million. So, and I will tell you, reading what an appropriate general fund fund balance is has been more difficult than ever before, because of some of the federal dollars that are, and how districts are spending, and the timing of it, that type of thing, all kind of has thrown it where it's, it's difficult to read what that is. And it's really having that forward-looking, and having a look out into the future when those federal, those short, those one-time federal dollars are gone, and how that overall impact is gonna, gonna work on the general fund, so. So, that's really those statements. While we're there, on page sixteen, you notice there's a new capital projects on there. That's the, the bond, will account for the bond projects. And technically, we perform some compliance procedures. You're required, under state law, when you have a bond project like that, to have what they call a bond, they call it a hundred-and-twenty-day bond audit. There's different language for it, but there's a requirement for you to have that audit to make sure that it's, things are being done in compliance with the, with the state law on, on those projects. So, we did the initial procedures on that this year, but there will be more performed in the future years.
I'd like to just add to what Nate said about our fund balance in the ESSER money, is that our, what we used our ESSER funds for, were for some bigger projects. So, our fund balance isn't inflated as much as some districts potentially could be, because you can use it for lots of different things, right? So, some districts potentially could've inflated their fund balance quite a bit with this influx of money, and then when that goes away, it's gonna drop back down, probably, eventually, or whatever. To where we've kinda done special budgets, so like our main project was the HVAC project at Purdy and North Penn. So, a lot of our dollars, the majority of them, went to those projects, so it doesn't inflate that fund balance.
Right, and I say that mostly to say, as you're looking and hearing different fund balances around from different districts, they're, they've been all over the place. I actually have a district that spent all of their dollars, their ESSER dollars, and put, and it basically, their fund balance got very large, and they're gonna be spending it down, that type of thing. So, all kinds of different things, and just, you know, just something to look at and to consider when you're looking at those types of things, so. The other bond report you have is a Single Audit Act Compliance Report. This details out all the federal dollars that the districts received for the year. The schedule of expenditures of federal awards starts on page four, goes through page seven. If you look at the bottom of page seven, you can see the total expenditures at just under two point five million for the year. And then, in terms of the results, there's a good summary on page fifteen. The schedule's called the Summary of Auditor's Results, and kinda puts in table format what all of the reports are that are included in the lengthy reports that the standards have us, have us write out. But it basically puts in, for the financial statement side of things, as I was talking about, the opinion on the financial statements, that's that first line, is unmodified, which is what you're looking for. We're also required, under standards, to look at internal controls. We don't give an opinion on internal controls, but if something comes up during our procedures, we're required to report those to you, whether they're material weaknesses or significant deficiency. We didn't have anything reported there, nor non-compliance that was material to financial statements. And that would be anything from a state contract to a local contract, those types of things that would materially, excuse me, materially impact the financial statements, there's nothing to report there. From a federal awards side, we take that schedule, that two point five million, we go through a process, looking at all the different grants that you have, and kinda do a risk assessment on that as well, to determine what programs we're gonna have to test. There's a certain amount of coverage that we have to do under federal guidelines. And the program that we tested, to no surprise, is the Education Stabilization Fund, that's that ESSER money. And all those different grants that you got under that are grouped together by the feds, and we have to look at those as a whole when we're doing our testing. And I'm happy to say on that, we do the same thing, we look at controls, we look at compliance, and we give an opinion on compliance, and there were no matters to report. So, no non-compliance noted, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So, so a very clean report, as far as that goes. And then the last document we have is the Independent Auditor's Communication, those charged with governments, that's this letter. The thing that I'm gonna point out here, because I've had a couple of places since we started putting this language, ask about it, is there's a new paragraph on page two called Sign. called significant risks identified. So, in that paragraph, we say that there's two significant risks that we identify and that we have to consider. This is a part of the new standards, we have to communicate that with you. The two items were management override of internal controls and revenue recognition, that is not anything unusual. That basically in standards, it says we have to consider those significant risks or explain things away in some way to do it. So, we have to look at revenue recognition, consider a significant risk. It's not anything specific to Penfield schools where, you know, there was something that Penfield did or Penfield has done in the past that makes it a heightened risk, it's just by its nature, it's considered to be a significant risk. So, there's a couple of other attachments in that letter, nothing that raised, there was one management letter comment, nothing that raises anything to a significant level if it was, it would have been a significant deficiency or a material weakness. And then also, just for your viewing pleasure, attachment via is all the new standards that are coming up, you know, Gatsby hit a milestone this year, they hit number one hundred and immediately after that hit one oh one. So, it's just more work that's coming. There's a couple that will have an impact, subscription-based information technology arrangements, we're finding that schools, it's kind of like leases, but think the IT side of things, think, you know, some of the things that you, you know, curriculum, a lot of times now, there's IT-type arrangements, that kind of stuff related to that, where you're in some kind of subscription, that's something that will have to be considered and looked at in the coming years. And then the next one that's probably going to have some kind of impact, but again, it's only on government-wide statements, would be compensated absences, they're changing the rules a little bit on compensated absences, but we still have fiscal year twenty-five is the first that has to be included. So, yeah, overall clean audit and very prompt audit as well, I would say.
So, it's not common at all, I don't know, to get financials this quickly, I don't know how soon she got you your end stuff, but it must have been pretty quick and it must have been pretty clean to begin with because this is an amazing performance to see financials completed this soon, it's truly impressive. Nice job, Angie, really.
Thank you very much. Is there any additional questions for? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, moving on to six point two.
Yes, so I just wanted to recognize a couple of our employees. Ms. Angela Birghetter, she works in our business office and she works as our payroll specialist and she just achieved her Michigan School Business Officials Business Office Specialist certification, which means that she completed ninety hours of professional development specifically focused on her roles and responsibilities in the business office. So, we're really an employee who's willing to be a lifelong learner. And then secondly, I wanted to acknowledge Mr. Brett Steele, our athletic director. I received a letter that's attached in the packet from the Michigan Interscholastic Athletic Administration Association, sorry, it gets all messed up when I try to. Yes, MIAAA. But he, over the summer, voluntarily signed up to go to a workshop where he worked on exploring the theme of equity in educational athletics, and they sent me a letter just expressing that he was very engaged in the learning and had a lot of good questions. And as a result of that, you know, when he came back and we were working to plan Victory Day, that's something that, you know, ultimately, we're not going to let that vision die off, we're going to take a little bit longer to get the participants and volunteers that we need to make it a successful event. So, I appreciate him as well for being a lifelong learner too.
Awesome, thank you. Moving on to number seven, communications, seven point one, the student representative report, Natalie.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say a few things. So, NHS, they just went out to a beach and collected over ten pounds of trash, so that's really exciting, making the place better. I have a lot of my friends who are getting into different things, we're all seniors this year, so it's been really stressful for a lot of us, but we're making it through and I would just like to congratulate the eighth-grade football team for winning their game. My brother's on that team, I'm super proud of all the guys, they work so hard.
Outstanding, thank you Natalie. Moving on to seven point two, superintendent's report.
Yes, I just have a few things to update the board on. First, we just, prior to this meeting, the administrative team and I met together, first as a team and then with HumanX to review our climate and culture data from last year and start the process of setting some goals for how we plan to move forward with improving climate and culture throughout the district. One of the things that I've been working on with the staff is at our back-to-school professional development, we were able to work together on defining our collective Y, and we had all of our staff there. Typically, it was a teacher professional development day, so it was great to have every single department there and to be able to work on that. And one of the activities we did was processing, asking ourselves why we teach and digging really deep into that, or why we educate, and we talked about how anybody that works in the school environment is an educator. And so, our Y statement that we came up with was that we teach and educate to inspire our students to reach their full potential and be the best version of themselves so that they can have a positive impact in their community and create a better world for current and future generations. So, it was really powerful that we were all able to come to that, and I met with half of the staff in one group and another half in the other group, and literally where we got to in both of those groups was off by, the statement was off by one or two words. And I've done this activity a number of times, it's based on Simon Sinek's work, and it was just really exciting to see that our staff had that same vision of why we're here. But as a follow-up, what I plan to do this week is launch a employee recognition program for all of our staff. And what it will entail is all of us being able to nominate others that we work with, regardless of their role, based on how we see them fulfilling our mission of educating our students and living out our Y. And so, stay tuned for that because there's going to be some exciting opportunities for people to recognize their peers and people that they work with day to day so that we can showcase that and celebrate the positive things that are happening. The second thing that I wanted to let you know is that we're planning a homecoming tailgate for homecoming for all of our staff and their families for before the games, and I'm working with our band director, Patrick Beamer, on that, and April's going to help with that as well. So, if you're available for that game, I believe it's October seventh, I would certainly love some help manning the grill, would be great. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of is that I met with Deputy Salesberry and Chris Young last week to discuss some of the most recent changes that are coming through Michigan State Police and emergency operations planning. And so, he's new in his role and he's been able to offer a lot of support to chuck in our eyes as we move forward. We're, I'm going to be, I'm engaging in two different trainings in the next month on learning more updates about school safety and plan to incorporate those into the emergency operations plan before bringing it for your review next month. Another thing that's happened in the last month is that I met with Mr. Steele and many of our coaches to discuss the potential of launching a fundraising campaign for AstroTurf for our football field. And I made the architect and construction manager aware of that and they're working to help us make sure that that can go out to bid as an alternate so that we would at least have numbers. And so, I'm taking two different approaches, one is really big picture, looking at how we can get larger pledges and things of that nature, and then more grassroots type of fundraising. So, currently, one of our main strategies is looking at a couple of different grant opportunities, and so I'm going to be working to try and get those things put together over the next couple of weeks so that we can move forward with getting those launched. One of the cool things about the possibility of having a synthetic field is that there's a significant savings in labor. We have a limited landscaping and maintenance crew and it's all hands on deck during the time of year when everything else is also happening, and so the thought of being able to, there's still maintenance involved with synthetic turf, but the thought of being able to maximize our employees at a busy time of year when we go back to school in the fall and at the end of the year when things are winding down is definitely an attractive thing as well as the access that our community could have to that, our youth sports programs, our band, and all the other teams that benefit from synthetic turf that otherwise are, you know, you know, pretty much stuck to being in the gym and/or not being able to practice on the field because we need it to be in one piece for the game on Friday night. One of the big things that came out of our meeting with HumanX was looking at what we can do to really boost climate and culture. We looked at how our district-wide, we had a hundred and eighty-one participants on the survey, and so we were able to look at what were our top five on that as well as what were our bottom five. And so, the ideas that we would action plan around something out of the top five that we really think would be high impact for our district, and that we would action plan around something out of the bottom five that would help our district move forward as well. And so, our group just kind of skimmed the surface on that and you can look forward to having some more information around where we landed on that. I also wanted to bring to your attention that the agenda does look a little different this month and that's due to Fay, having a many years of experience and understanding how it should be organized, and so we're testing it out tonight, but ideally, we would land on a template or structure for the meetings, so any feedback that you have on how this is flowing for you tonight, I would be happy to have. The final thing is just in terms of the bond, right now, we're getting ready to go out to bid on bid pack two and bid pack three, which is our roofs on our buildings that need to be replaced, it's the secure entrance at the high school, it is the bathrooms in both Dunlap and the middle school, the roofs are also at Dunlap and the middle school, and it's new boilers at Dunlap and the middle school. And so, a lot of the things and the work that we're doing is really necessary and really important for the district so that, you know, we don't have employees on the roof pushing water off every time it rains to keep it from coming inside. But I want the community to be aware that while some of these things aren't really visible to you necessarily, they are going to make a tremendous impact on the efficiency of our buildings and also, you know, just in terms of our ability to move forward with more updated facilities. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Moving on to number eight, this is the consent agenda, which consists of eight point one through eight point six. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move.
So, I got a motion by Brian and a second by Brad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to number nine, item is removed, there was nothing removed. So, moving on to number ten, items for approval or discussion, which is number ten point one, approval of new staff. Stephanie, you had some new staff members?
Yes, well, the physical education teacher resigned already since I put this on here, so we have a vacancy for a physical education teacher at the elementary, so the motion would be for approving our new music teacher at North Penn and Purdy, and I was actually able to see Mrs. Williamson Franklin do a lesson and on a walkthrough with Mrs. Glass, and she is highly engaging and exciting to watch, and I still get a smile because, you know, the bright part of God is giving to see the kids engaged in learning. So, I highly recommend her for your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve Mrs. Williamson Franklin, who is the music teacher at Purdy North Penn replacing Melissa Baxter?
I'll make that motion.
So, I have a motion from Sarah and a second by Dawn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to seven, excuse me, ten point two, bond bills approval.
Yes, so you have in front of you, well, in your board packet, I apologize, in front of you, bills that total a hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents, payments both to King Scott Associates as well as Triangle. The work that has been completed with King Scott's, you know, makes up the majority of that payment, about ninety thousand dollars, and that's because we're getting everything out to bid. You'll recall that we're going to pay more in architectural fees upfront as we're working on the design and development and getting things out to bid, and less on the construction management side, and then once we're breaking ground this spring, it'll be bigger bills on the construction management side and smaller on architectural work. So, at any rate, I recommend that you approve the payment of those bond bills.
Do I have a motion to approve the three bills to King Scott and the one bill to Triangle Associates?
So, move. Support.
So, I have a motion by Brad and support by Ryan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to ten point three, this is a proposal of the monthly work sessions, this is actually kind of between Stephanie and I, so I'll start with this one. This is a recommendation that Stephanie and I came up with, that we hold work sessions along with our community meetings. This is not to be confused with committee of the whole, this is not to be confused with replacing committee meetings. These are six set dates that we would hold workshops for items such as setting superintendent goals, working on strategic plan, any type of thing that comes up such as that. We, Stephanie and I discussed if we had six dates preset on the calendar, it would just be a lot easier to have those workshops preset. Would you want to add anything to that, Stephanie?
Yeah, just, you know, as the job, you know, I'm how many months in and things continue to be very busy and lots of different things seem to pop up, and so I feel like in order for us to really drive the strategic plan forward, to have these dates on the calendar will allow for us to do the work together so that everybody feels like they're in the know and able to contribute to that as we continue to work together.
So, do I have a motion to approve these board work sessions?
So, move.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Tim and a second by Dawn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to item number eleven, this is a closed session. So, you need a motion? Yeah, I need a motion to go into closed session.
A motion that we go into closed session under AE of the closed session?
A second bit.
So, I have a motion by Tim and a second by Sarah, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
You must.
Let's roll call those.
I'm sorry, I need to roll call those, Sarah.
Okay. That's all right. Brad Prandell?
Hi.
Dawn Forton?
Yes.
Sarah Jones, yes. Brian Smith?
Yes.
Dana Wells-Jenny?
Yes.
Jeff Wilfersberger?
Yes.
Tim Wood?
Yes.
Natalie. Your brother's ass, it was beautiful.
He got it in his sash.
Perfect timing. Nice.
So you guys do the closed session in here? You guys do the closed session in here, not a different room? Usually, usually it's people that, that go somewhere else. And how do we know when you're done, are you guys gonna come get us then?
Well, there's, somebody will go out there.
And what was the closed session for, I got, I didn't get that in a I don't know for like what matter though, I mean, it's attorney-client privilege could be for right, for property purchase, for, uh, employment situation, cause it's just for a legal opinion? Just a legal opinion? I don't know, what is that? How that's legal, closed session for just a legal opinion? I don't know, guys.
Sorry.
I don't know.
Open session is, uh, seven forty-seven. Moving on to number twelve, um, board comments, is there any comments from the board? Anyone's got any comments?
I'd just like to thank the staff, the teachers and everybody all the way down through for the hard work.
No, absolutely. Uh, I'll reiterate that Brad and then, uh, Angela Birgeter and Brett, just wanna tell them congratulations for the two awards they won. Um, it's a lot of hard work and dedication, which those are dedicated to the district and I just wanna thank them for that and, uh, excited. Is there any additional comments? Alright, it is seven forty-eight and I was making, during this meeting.
Four o'clock. Oh, no, you're good, nope, I was, yep, I just decided. Was that on the schedule or was that a, a added thing?
What's that?
That, uh, closed session?
It was on the agenda.
It was on the agenda, okay.
Yeah, so.
I hadn't seen the agenda prior, so.
So not speaking out of, uh, order here by anything, but, uh, when you go into closed session, you have to state why you're going into closed session. That's why it gets stated, it's attorney-client privilege.
Right.
Under section eight A of the Open Meetings Act.
And what is, what is eight A, cause typically when I, when I hear people cite, it's usually citing the specifics in the, uh, MCL that is giving you the, like, giving you authority, so it, it, I mean, is it, is that just the statute that says under attorney-client privilege then, you know? Okay, okay, cause that's, that's all I was wondering, yeah, so, I get that. Do you understand what I'm frustrated about as far as the, you know, that stuff at all?
Uh, I, I do, but I don't.
You don't, okay.
So I, I know you, you speak in a lot of meetings.
Yep.
Um, the hardest thing to, to understand and I, and I know you know the rules.
Yeah.
Um, this, this is a meeting that is open to the public, this is not an open meeting. This is a meeting of the Board of Education. It's open to the public and public comment, that is the chance for the public to speak, they're able to view.
Right.
Now, if you want to open meeting, a prime example is Penfield Township. That, anybody can join in and anybody can speak at any point in time throughout the entire meeting, it's a public meeting.
I, I mean, where, I guess, where, who taught you that, where, where is that written, right, where is that defined, I guess?
It's state law under Board of Educations. We're not, we're not, we're not political affiliated in any way, we're not political.
You're elected officials, so you are.
Correct, absolutely, we're not political, no, this is a non-political scene.
I understand, it's not partisan, but it is political, you have to understand. Partisan and political, those are different completely. You, it's like, it's like square and rectangle, right? You can, you can be yeah, one and not the other. See how that, they, they turn and run as soon as the leader came. The Marxist leader in the middle there, she came in. The Marxist leader came and they ran, they had to, they had to leave, that was crazy. Just asking nice questions. Yeah. I just, just had questions, no one? No, I'm, I'm leading out this way. Yeah. I'm, I'm alumni, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, no. I was just seeing if you, I'm just parked out this way, I, I'm going out this way, Jack, I was just seeing, I thought he was gonna answer questions. Make sure no one else is straggling too, you probably should check that out, yeah. Alright, man, have a good night. Yep, there you go, there you have it now, see, that's what happens, you, you just, I was asking nice questions. Did you see how he turned and ran? He simply had to run away because he didn't want to answer any questions or, or talk to anybody when, when they were there, so. There's, uh, that's how it goes.